Good evening, members of the House, and welcome to the director's session of the Town Council of Cape Creek. Gary Lerns, Monty Van Gogh Report, 2016. The rule, please, Karen.
Councilman Esser?
Here.
Councilman Bunch?
Here.
Councilwoman Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lamar?
Here.
Councilman McGuire?
Here.
Councilman Lipsky?
Here.
Your friend?
Here. Uh, Van Gogh, would you please, uh... ...in the land of the United States of America, and if there are other states, one nation under God, in the law of liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Van Gogh. Under, uh, two announcements, there are two, on behalf of the council, the best of the fresh new year to everyone. Uh, secondly, uh, this morning I attended the swearing-in ceremony of Phoenix Mayor, uh, Grayve Stanton, and was with him afterwards, and he wanted me to convey best wishes to this council and to the community, and that he looks forward to working with us, uh, in his second term. Call the public, Karen.
Bill Allen?
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Bill Allen. I reside at three eight nine one four dot seventy-third Street here in Cave Creek. I'm here to represent the Water and Highway Route Council and to request that, uh, all of the council members attend the June, uh, July, not January, January, let's try that. January fifteenth meeting, over. Uh, what we plan to do at that meeting is to discuss our priorities for this next year, and since we're directly responsible to the council, it's, uh, our desire that all council members be there so that we can hear their concerns and their needs and the things that they are interested in. Over the past two years, we've worked diligently with two separate utility directors. We'll start again with the third getting this next week. Uh, we're very excited about where we've come from, what we've done, and hope to be able to address the main issues concerned by the council, uh, in the next several years. So if you would be in a position of joy, six o'clock, January fifteenth, we would certainly appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Doctor. Ms. Karen?
Tracy Gasali. Good evening, happy new year. I'm Tracy Gasali, and I'm your president for Cave Creek Pro Rodeo. At this time, I'd just like the members that came out and braved the rain to stand up and be recognized. Cave Creek Pro Rodeo, thank you. Um, couple of quick announcements, exciting announcements. Um, the board elected to retain Ms. Katie Keane as our 2016 queen. She did an amazing job in 2015 representing Cave Creek Pro Rodeo and the town of Cave Creek. She also just helped out with, uh, the Fiesta Days Parade, the Fiesta Bowl Parade this past weekend. Thank you, Katie. And, um, one final exciting announcement. I don't have handouts because it is a final approval with the tour manager, but for the first time ever after our pro rodeo, we booked a national act to perform a concert Saturday night at the rodeo grounds. And we booked Daryl Singletary to play live Saturday night. I would have handouts to pass out, but I have to have the tour manager's approval. So these will be sent to Peter in the office, and he can get them in your inbox. So we're really excited to be able to bring a national act to our town, and our rodeo fans are excited. Um, we're obviously here tonight for the agenda item B four, and we appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy, and volunteers, thank you. Ms. Karen?
Larry Went.
Good evening, Mayor, the members of council, Larry Went, Buffalo Chip Salin. I wanted to give everybody a little update on what's happening with the eyesore of a building that's still in the middle of town. Uh, we did get, um, here about a week and a half ago, uh, the release on the asbestos abatement. Uh, they did find some asbestos in the building because of the age of the building. It was a very small amount, but still it had to be removed professionally, so that has kept us from being able to go in and recover anything or start the tear down. Uh, we do look forward to doing that, uh, if the rain will cooperate with us, we should start on that later, uh, this week. And, uh, I also wanted to thank again the mayor and council for your support. We are moving ahead with rebuilding as much as Mike hates to hear it, we're probably like friends on a daily basis now, and, uh, uh, you guys have just gone out of your way. I know there's a flash going out. We've got a couple of employees that, uh, are upset that they didn't receive, uh, funding from the fundraiser. It's my understanding, and I don't, Pam isn't here from the food bank, but I think that, uh, they just deposited the money from the fundraiser in the Parkway Bank, uh, account today. So, uh, we had given out about eleven thousand dollars from the Buffalo Chip to employees that single parent mothers, people that hadn't found other jobs and some things, and we're counting on this money from the fundraiser now to, uh, help all of the, all of the staff as much as we can. But with a hundred and twenty staff, it only works out to about, you know, ninety dollars a person. So, uh, it is, again, a big thanks for the support in this community and to the town, and, uh, we will rebuild, and we are continuing. Does anyone have any questions I could answer?
All right, sir.
Thank you.
I'm not allowed to speak.
If there's anyone else who should speak, call the public, it's still open. Karen, under seeing on council, we proceed with the consent agenda, and that is the approval of the December seventh, 2015 letter of council meeting. That's motion to approve. So, move it. Second. You moved in second. All those in favor, please signify by saying a aye.
Aye.
The ayes are the habit. Thank you, council. Under the general agenda items, first, council discussion and approval of resolution R. 2016, Act Zero Two, declaring the United States of America Patent Public Roadway and Utilities Right-of-Way Easements described in Table A are dedicated to public or roadway and utilities easements and will be used for public roadway and utilities purposes. Town manager, are you ready?
I'm ready. I'm three. Thank you, Mayor. The, uh, Meritage Homes has a project, uh, request on the adjacent property, uh, which is served by these two, uh, patent reservation, aligned on fifty-third, Third and Fifty-fourth Street. Their attorney has been working with our attorney, Mr. Sims, to develop this process, uh, to bring to council to activate, basically, the patent reservations as public right-of-way. Uh, I've provided a, uh, an exhibit for you, highlighted, which shows the six parcels in question. Uh, each parcel has a thirty-three-foot patent reservation, not the easement on it. There was some question about why there was not, uh, along Fifty-third Street, why it was half, uh, all the way up the north, and the reason for that is that that portion is within the project itself, and they don't need to activate that. Uh, there does need to be an activation on the parcel to the west to provide access to the parcel north of that. Uh, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Questions from council? Because I understand that the only thing before council is the patent.
That's correct.
That's the only thing tonight, okay. Uh, does anyone wish to speak on this, from the public? Okay, we'll come back to council. I have a question, Councilman Bunch.
Ian, you say that that one section is not, uh, done because it's, it's part of the project.
Correct.
Um, I have to tell you that I, my, my property in town, uh, here has a patent easement worth development across the street. Used thirty feet of the thirty-three-foot patent online so they could enhance their project, which is not a fair and equitable balance in my mind of the, of the, the spirit of what patent easements are for. Would that be roadway and that, or would that be something that would come forward with a plan later on?
Yes, it would.
Which one?
Councilman Bunch, it would come forward with a plan for the council to see. Uh, you would see a site plan, conceptual site plan proposed for the resuming request, uh, which we'll probably find its way to council in March.
Okay, yeah, I got a real issue with, with encumbering adjacent properties for, for a project to this size.
Councilman, ask your question.
Ian, if I understand it correctly, there are a number of non-owners, Phoenix, um, this is on both sides, so it's a total of sixty-six feet.
That's correct, Councilman Esser.
And you notify them?
They, everyone was notified, uh, two weeks prior to this meeting. So I received calls from the two people, um, who were affected by it.
Federal patent easement. Councilman Mubak, question?
Would these easements be used to provide, uh, access or through streets to properties to the north?
Uh, access will not go farther north than the Meritage Homes project.
Any other questions from council? Okay, in order to proceed, we need a motion, a motion to approve, a motion to approve. Vice Mayor Lamar?
I move to approve resolution R. 2016-02, resolution of the mayor and town council in the town of Cave Creek, Arizona, declaring the United States of America Patent Public Roadway and Utilities Right-of-Way Easements described in Table A are dedicated to public.
Second. Motion has been made, and second vice mayor.
Other than perhaps, uh, some discussion about, uh, equities with Councilman Bunch, that's what, this is what they're for. So that's why I'm making a motion.
Councilman Esser, you have a second?
Uh, just to kind of echo what the vice mayor said, uh, it's going to provide access to a project on Fifty-third that'll make the access in crescendo.
I, I have a question, finally.
Sure. Councilman Mubak, question?
Does the town take a role in, um, settling issues such as Councilman Bunch has described? Is there something the town can do in those situations?
Mayor, remember?
Councilman McGuire. The activation of a federal patent is fairly common. In nineteen thirties, there was a federal law passed that, in effect, allowed, the, the feds deeded land to property owners subject to the easement. And, but they, they, the patent said that we didn't want to burden local government with having to buy or condemn, and so it could be used for public purposes. And cities across the state then activate the federal patent to become part of your road system. You've done it before. And I didn't know about the half, uh, section, the, the, I guess, half of the thirty-three feet up on this northern section until I saw the map. If Ian's, what Ian is saying is part of the project, and if you're concerned, Councilmember Bunch, is to, is to know that that's available for right-of-way. The property owner, who is, who is required, Meritage Home, who I think is the, I think they're the, will be the buyer and can act as the agent for the property owner. If they own the property, I suspect that's part of the site plan process, subject to our constitutional exemptions, is that we could probably, you, the town, could probably burden that for roadway. I mean, without the necessity for activating the patent, that's actually better. But, but we'll do that in the course of the site plan. So this is fairly customary. I do know there was some questions among council members about land use. That's not what we're discussing tonight. That will be subject to an entirely different matter as zoning.
For the questions from council? Councilman Bunch?
I guess if we make it fair enough, we're down the road off the fourth thing, because it certainly isn't now.
And to answer your question, I think, I think Ian, I mean, I, I think it's part of the site plan. Is that, is that, is it, is the portion, portion not covered? Is that the other thirty-three feet that's on the property?
Yes, correct.
And so my sense is, they're going to come back to you with a site plan, and you, your planners are going to say, we need this access for the road, and then I think under the federal and state constitution, you have a right to ask them to dedicate that. That's actually better than activating a path.
Okay. Councilman Lipsky? Councilman Mubak?
I have a question.
Question?
No, I'm sorry.
No, I'm, uh, why, and don't you have anything to say?
No.
Okay. Then we will move towards the vote. Karen, the rule, please, on this?
Councilman Esser?
Yes.
Councilman Bunch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lamar?
Yes.
Councilman McGuire?
Yes.
Councilman Lipsky?
Yes.
Your friend's here?
Yes, Vice Leader Sam Mizu, the motion clearly passes. Thank you, council. And then, number two, council discussion and approval of case number SPR fifteen, actually, before Park West Phase Three Site Plan Review for two commercial buildings totaling approximately twelve thousand ninety-eight square feet of floor area.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, three years ago, the property, uh, land use was changed by the council to, uh, from desert road to commercial. The, uh, zoning district property was subsequently changed from desert road, D R V nine, to general commercial by the council as well. A referendum petition was filed later, uh, causing the council's decision of changing the zoning replaced on the ballot. Um, the council's, um, motion was affirmed by the voters. Uh, what you have here now is the final site plan for, uh, the entire property, four acres total. McDonald's is east of this project, Starbucks is west, and what you have is a site plan for two, approximately six thousand square foot, uh, retail buildings. Project meets all of the aspects of the zoning ordinance for umsted landscape, uh, retention, parking. In fact, the parking is in access of western fire, so they could have a restment of some kind, uh, in the future. I'll answer any questions you may have.
Questions from council, Councilman Mubak?
Ian, the graphic that you provided us with tonight seems to show the building that we anticipate might be Starbucks. Is there a reason why that is included?
The architect of the project wanted the council to be aware of what had been approved previously. It's not part of this project, but it was something that had been planned for bringing the, this site plan forward because they had to make sure that all the parcels work together.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Do we, we get it, Councilman Esser?
Ian, just for clarification, there's more to come before we approve this tonight, correct?
Uh, actually, Councilman Esser, everything for these three parcels now has been approved by council. Go ahead and then...
Talking about what they'll submit as far as...
Uh, it would be building permits, you had to point out.
With... My bags.
Correct. Got it. Thank you.
Any questions from council? Councilman Mubak?
Remember when this project came by, before we requested a hitching post in the back for people, neighbors, who might want to ride their horses from McDonald's? Is that still there?
Yes, it is.
It is. I didn't see it on the drawings, so I wanted to make sure we put that in place for our question friends, that I have. We get it.
Right through the window.
Yes. Okay, very good.
Any questions?
Do we have questions?
Yes.
Okay, we, we're talking about the hitching post, which we already approved at McDonald's. Are there any similar, uh, considerations for horses on the present plan?
I believe there are trails across the property, uh, in consideration, yes.
Vice Mayor Lamar, question?
Yeah, I'm with Mr., uh, Mr. Councilman Bunch for, you know, making sure that there's a hitching post there. My mayor loves, uh, egg McMuffins.
I love that you got it back, okay? Oh, yeah, she's too tall and too pretty. She needs to keep that deep weight on her back.
Other questions from council? Do we know the nature of the two B two, or is it two B two?
Uh, Mayor, I do not. The applicant is here tonight, has any questions he may have.
Would the applicant like to speak? If not, we'll proceed here.
Mayor, members of council, for the record, my name is Stuart Jean. I'm in Princeville, Park West Development, eighty-seven oh one, East Bishop Anita Drive, Scottsdale, Arizona. Now, this has been, I think, the last step of the long journey that we've all been involved in from different, different things. And, uh, I think Ian's pointed out, there is a little bit of confusion, I think, some, a little bit about what's going on. We're just looking at the two buildings. And I think probably the thing I should do tonight, I'll answer any questions that anyone in the audience or members of the council might want me to, is to give a little bit of clarification as to what's been going on down there. Don's already jumped in here for the paper, so maybe I'm going to ruin his story here or something. But, uh, all I can tell you is McDonald's is paying their rent every month, and, uh, they've had a very difficult time on a nationwide basis, I think, as everyone knows. Uh, they decided to do a bunch of different things in different locations, and all out, uh, a lot of it was in the west down here. And, uh, well, not alone up here, there are about five or six other locations in Phoenix that were stopped exactly like this. And if you all remember, they, they submitted plans, they papered up permits and everything. And, um, they went down a while back and poured the fence down, and, uh, had a removal, I should say, shouldn't speak disparaging like that. They removed the fence and, um, brought to our attention, and we said, hey, you know, you can't do that. You've got to protect that pad and the property and things like that. So they came back, put it back, and, um, that's kind of the status of McDonald's. I wish they were there. It's caused us obviously some agony in getting this thing all put together. And what we really did was to, you know, we got to get something here to add some credibility to what we're doing. So it went out, and we made a deal with Starbucks. And Starbucks has been in front of you, uh, several months ago, and that's in, and it's approved. And I'm happy to tell you tonight that I've been doing this a long time, this, um, thirty-nine years about to over. I'm going to build the rest of the project. I'm not going to ground lease to the tenants, so we'll be building for Starbucks. The deal's all done, executed. And in fact, I think by the end of the month, uh, of January, we should be in with plans, at least the gradient range and early, early on plans, we're trying to layer them, and it's our goal to have them holding this summer. So we'll start with the Starbucks. And that's all in front of you, and what we're here tonight to just discuss are the two of the buildings that will be in between the McDonald's and the Starbucks. Uh, again, those are just going to be spec buildings. Uh, we've, we've had a lot of tenant activity. The tenants in every building around here, uh, have, at one time or another, tried to go with us at this location, and from all of the trials and tribulations we've had, we've seen them go to other places. We've still got very good interest. The buildings that, uh, are very similar in nature in terms of design, uh, I think after what's happened on the corner down there, we needed to step up a little bit on the design, and our buildings are going to be very similar to, uh, what is now the Kiwanis Building downtown, where the Kiwanis functions. They're more of a southwest, uh, design and southwest construction. And I think that's going to be a little more pleasing with what we have. Uh, we're, uh, we're overparked. Uh, we, as Ian said, we've got all the basic requirements for the, uh, non-disturbed and, and revegetation areas, uh, drainage, everything is done. And, uh, it's really, uh, about, all it is is a pretty simple little project, and I think we'll have it all under construction, all of the Starbucks and the shop building in, uh, all the next, hopefully, next ninety days.
Questions from council? Councilman Lipsky?
Uh, I'm just curious, what might the reasoning be for moving the fence?
Ian, that's a big corporation, that's the only answer I've got. I, uh, McDonald's had eighteen people working here in, in Phoenix in a regional office. That office doesn't exist. They left two people here in the real estate department, two people in the management department. I happen to know them because I've been around since I was long, and most of them have too. And I just simply called them and told them, I said, you know, you have a, an asset out there, and, and you too, and I want you to, uh, you know, consider putting that back up. And I, I think it was simply, I don't know if it's a true answer, but I think it was simply somebody in corporate America in Chicago or that they now operate out, Phoenix is closed down, Phoenix consolidated, went to Long Beach, California. They closed Denver, Denver, went to Dallas. So I, I, I think they just said, hey, what are we putting that fence up for? I mean, that was a rental fence up. One they have now is not a rental fence, it's constructed there. So I think it says something for what it's worth of their commitment. We appreciate everybody still going down to the McDonald's or Center Down at Friday, but we'd like to get this done.
Any questions?
Thank you.
You have a question?
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you all, I appreciate your patience and your help over these many years.
Okay.
Okay, there is public hearing on item number two, if anyone wants to speak, and no one does, so we'll come back to council for a moment. Thank you, Vice Mayor Lamar.
I move to approve case number SPR fifteen oh four, Park West Phase Three Site Plan Review for two commercial buildings totaling approximately twelve thousand ninety-eight square feet of floor area.
Second.
Uh, as the applicant pointed out, it has been a long and winding road and referendums, and, uh, I'm glad to see this come to an end. This is a good use of that area and that, that corner. People of Cave Creek have confirmed that in a referendum election, and, uh, thank you for your persistence. Sometimes it's, uh, the persistence is mistaken for genius, but maybe you have a little bit of both on this one.
Yeah, I don't know.
Thank you, Councilman Bunch. Show either second?
Yeah, I'm not, uh, I'm not thrilled, but I'm, I'm, I'm happy that this time the whole, that one commercial project was nice.
Anything else from council? If not, probably to the board, all those in favor of motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes are the habit. Thank you, council. Onto agenda item number three, council discussion and direction of the town manager. We're already proceeding with drafting an agreement, treating the town of Cave Creek and the Roadhouse, allowing the Roadhouse use of town public right-of-way, town manager?
Sure. Ian, council, um, member folks from the Roadhouse, they asked to make a presentation to the town council about building another patio on their building that would sit on the right-of-way the town owns. Uh, there was some concerns with the previous pedo about the process, so, uh, my recommendation was the first step in this process was come to you folks, make your presentation, uh, get a sense of what you folks wanted to do that, and hopefully, uh, give direction to me and to them. We got any, we got a plus with the document agreement if they want to do that. Um, so I would ask the representatives of the Roadhouse to make their presentation on this.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, some of you, I, I don't want to say old timers, but some of you will recognize that my name's Noel Hibbits, and I, I lived and had an office as a real estate lawyer in the next Brooklyn South of here. Um, I was out here from nineteen ninety through two thousand seven. Went down to ASU, did, pursued some sustainability studies, and ended up teaching a, a class on, I guess you could call it zoning law, they're planning students for several years. I'm still down there, so my address is two five one five North Forty-Eighth Street. That's north of the old Catholic cemetery on Forty-Eighth Street, where I have a number of relatives. Um, I haven't been out here, I, I still actually have a lot of business out here, but I haven't been out here that much, and certainly haven't been in front of you since, um, I think, before I left. I'm here tonight, and in talking about timing, I want to cover two things. I was not representing, um, Jim O'Toole or his company, O'Toole Land of LCW Jones, the Roadhouse. I wasn't representing them when there was a recent period where there was what I would call a trial period, where, uh, favors and such were, you know, railing and whatnot were put down outside. Um, issues arose around it, they, they ripped it up, um, and pulled back from that activity. Um, I'd like to avoid too much discussion about backs that were bowed on, or hair that stood on end, or anything of that nature during that time, but I would like to just envision what you saw there, because all they want to do is essentially see if they can put that back. Um, so if you can look at that as a trial period, as an illustration of what they want to do, if they could duplicate it identically, that's what they would be asking for. So that's the timeframe I'd like you to think about in terms of what they're asking to go forward with. And then in terms of two ways to do that, let me talk about a different timeframe. I want to imagine that you go back to the time when the town first takes the fifteen-foot right-of-way. One of the big things I had to teach the students out there is these Nolan and Dolan cases. You may have heard about them, your lawyer may have talked to you about its actions. The U.S. Supreme Court has said, you know, we've got two limitations. When you go to the municipality, you say, mother, may I have a permit for my swimming pool in my backyard? The first limitation is there's a nexus, there's a connection. Okay, well, that doesn't necessarily give the municipality a right to take a sixty-foot right-of-way in front of your house because how's your swimming pool going to increase the traffic? So that's the nexus. That's not an issue. But the second one is the rough proportionality, as it's called. If you're going to actually increase the size of your building, and you're going to put two or three more cars a day up and down the road, does that give the municipality the right to take? the right to take two miles away from you? I'm not saying that the town of Cape Creek, if you could go back to that point in time, was not right to ask for an exaction, or to, well, quite candidly, the expression is, I would tell my students to think of the expression, exacting a pound of flesh. But the question is really whether or not, when the town said, we're giving it, you're giving us something, you have to, did they take a little bit too big a bite? Did the applicant go ouch, and did the town hit bone? Fifteen feet in the abstract doesn't sound like so much, but when you go and look at it, if I'm standing at the north edge of the fifteen feet, I essentially, I can't paint my building, my client can't paint his building without being in the right-of-way. So I think that if Mr. Whitmore, I think was his name, the man that developed the property, if he had an exaction hearing as he was supposed to have, and he debated the point, he might say, you know, you need, I can understand you want some for a sidewalk, but do you need to go all the way up to my building and make this late request in the process when my building's already been positioned there? So I think without hard feelings, and especially if you look up and down the street at other properties, what exactions the town has taken up and down the street, I think you could say that this fifteen feet stands out and it crowds the building. So the two ways that you could skin this cap, and we will leave it up to you, number one, you could come into some kind of a use agreement, lease or whatever, where my client leases the ground from the town. And then we have some liability issues that are generally covered through insurance and liability provisions, and that's one way to skin the cap. The other thing you could look at doing is abandoning or somehow relinquishing some of that ground back, not all the way, not to give up your sidewalk, but perhaps out close to or adjacent to the sidewalk. Whether you, which of those two routes you care to go, doesn't make a big difference, but I don't think if you decide to go on the latter route, you're necessarily giving something up that's outstanding when you go up and down the street and look at what else you have. So with that, I don't think I need to belabor either point. You could go either way. And I suppose if you have any questions, I'll ask them, I'll try to answer them.
Question, Councilman, that's their question.
I have a problem with your letter. First of all, when you talk about a trial period, what happened here was not a trial period. See, in the last line of your letter, you say, the town's failure to deliver the promised improvements in the Cape Creek streetscape. As far as I know, that's still on the board. You want fifteen feet back, which happens to be a current easement, a utility easement. You're giving us two options to do it, and I'm still not sure we have cleaned up the wreckage of the past.
Okay, the first point, I'm not sure I can adequately respond to it. I wasn't here during that point in time. I think the trial period was a name I gave it so that you could look back at the physical improvements. If the activity offended you, I'm sorry. On the second point, my understanding is that there are not utilities north of the sidewalk, and we're not asking for the full fifteen feet back should you chose to give up from. We would only be asking to come to stay north of the sidewalk and essentially give the area that was used before, do you see? So now, I may be wrong, but I have been told that there are no utilities north of the sidewalk. If I'm wrong, I'm wrong, and you can continue to have an easement for utilities anyway.
Town manager. Mayor, council, my understanding, there's a four-inch water line probably four feet north of the sidewalk.
Okay.
Approximately.
Okay. So one way to do it is to leave an easement for you to have a water line, another way to do it is for you to not give up ownership and look at a disagreement.
That's all the questions I have. Can I have a real question? Councilman Bunch question?
Yeah, I'll do.
Councilman Classy question?
Isn't there a sewer line that runs across there? Isn't that a sewer hookup? Because I know it ran across the Oak Creek school.
I'm unaware. Maybe a connection went across, that would not surprise me, but running along, side, parallel, my understanding, when I talked to the assistant utilities manager, we have just the water line right now.
So where's their sewer hookup?
Honestly, do not know.
Because I know it ran in front of the properties.
The way I do see, if I may speak plainly, the way I do see this is I try to work out the fine detail, because I think the asking question to whether it's sewer line or the water line, I think more the discussion is if the council is favors this, that would instruct myself and the town attorney to work with those folks to develop, put a development agreement together that would address all those concerns, whether easement, right-of-ways, sewer line, utilities, all that. If it's not, then you don't have to waste time pursuing this.
Well, I think that it would help us to understand based on what Mr. Hibbit said, that there is anything out there. So if you have water and a sewer line out there, then I would say that a right-of-way is pretty important.
Well, I'm not sure if the sewer line is under the sidewalk or in the road, which easily could be. I know for a fact from what my discussions with engineering staff is, from the sidewalk north toward the building, about four feet approximately.
Are you saying four feet of the fifteen feet that is ours?
Correct. My understanding, nothing is straight in Cape Creek, it all kind of bends or sorts, approximately four feet on average, off the sidewalk.
Do we have in-house expertise to determine what utilities are involved in this? I mean, is it something our people will go out and determine?
Right. If you were asking for a blue state, for example, we would go out, mark the water line.
For example?
For example.
Or the sewer line, for example.
For example. The other utilities would be whether it's a phone system or APS.
Whatever they are. Councilman Maguire, questions? We're in questions.
Yes, my understanding, there is a four-inch water line there, but there's also an eight-inch water line, which is closer to the road. But, you know, in talking with engineering, that's the, what I was told, I don't know how significant that is.
It's on the other side, so it would not be part of this project. The four-inch definitely, the eight-inch, that's my understanding, would not be.
Yeah, I certainly agree with Councilman Clancy, that we want as much information as we can have before we move forward on this.
Or maybe what he just said is more in line with the truth, which is what we've already gone through, what we already talked about, what we already sued for in the trial period, really had more going on underneath all of it that, well, I can tell you, from my viewpoint, I don't even know why this is in front of us, to be honest, given where we just were three to four months ago. So I think.
My understanding, we're in questions.
Right.
We think each statement's reasonable. Well, we're just in questions.
I think that's a fair question, why is it in front of us?
Part of the discussion was before that, you like the process, we would put the development agreement before you, it then came to you. Part of it was that, so my thought was, because we have changed the council, things change, that folks would make the proposal to you, it is something you would approve or not approve, or at least encourage. If it is, then we would go back and put the development agreement together to address all the concerns you have. So part of it was, it just happened, we didn't want it to just happen, we want the council aware anytime there's construction going on town property. So my thought was to have the you folks, at least hear the project, hear the proposal first. If the council does not want to do anything with town property, for example, this project, then we know. And that's how I plan to approach these things in the future.
I just, sorry. So your plan is to proceed in this manner in the future if we deny the request today?
No, you always take these things case by case. I always have folks that come to me, come to the town, they want to do something on town property. For example, we just had the homeowners association with lights on the town right-of-way. We brought that to you folks, are you gonna approve that or not? So instead of just trying to draft development agreements and bring it for you, we bring them to refer us, is this something the town would consider? If it's yes, then we'll go to the next step, which is the development agreement, or at least some negotiating items. If it's not.
I'll be more specific in the question. Regardless of what happens here today, if there is another business that enters a trial period like this one and is denied their attempt to pursue their trial, will you bring that to us if they ask for a formal agreement?
My understanding is.
Because I think that would be a waste of time.
There's no more trial period. I think it wound up and came down, that's.
No, no, Tom, I'm not talking about this one. I'm talking about another business, if another business decides to have a trial period, too.
We would enforce them taking a drop.
What would you then bring their?
That would be their choice.
And if it came to you, would bring it to us?
They wanted to approach and have that discussion with you. Right now, there's no more trial periods, no one's building on town property, unless you folks have seen an improvement, so.
Vice Mayor Lamar, question?
So, just so we're clear, you don't agree with the characterization of the applicant's attorney that this was a trial or not? It was a building without a permit?
At the time, correct.
Very simple.
If I can ask a more fundamental underlying question of our counselor. You know the back narrative to this, okay? I think everybody does. Given that you know the back narrative, does the applicant have a right to petition the council to consider this in the way in which it's being done now?
Mr. Mayor, every property owner has a right to petition. As I understand, because I was, I was the town attorney at the time, that there was an encroachment into the right-of-way, there was construction without proper permitting that came to your attention, and you directed that that construction cease and be dismantled. They now are requesting the right to use right-of-way, and they have that right to request. I think they're doing it through your manager. In this case, and I'm hearing your questions, this is all being done in the open, the manager is asking you questions. And what the two options that he's described, both are legal, and they have ups and downs, and we can talk about that. An abandonment would get you completely out of liability, but it would require them to pay consideration. Lease would not get you out of liability, and we need insurance and indemnity.
I'm not that far down the trickle, just whether or not they have the right.
They have, any, Mr. Mayor, every homeowner has a right to ask.
The council has the authority to grant or deny.
Yes, sir.
The town manager brought to my attention that they were gonna make this request, and I said, bring it to council, because it's the only body I know that can hear this new request.
Is there a requirement for the town manager to bring it to council? Or is it within the manager's purview to deny the request in and of itself?
Well, that is an intriguing question. Do you, do we, does this council want a town manager to make those type of decisions? So which is something entirely. Is that a question? It's a question. Well, it's probably not germane to the voting guard corner before. I understand your question, but I would say that once the council's feelings are known about a particular issue, that yes, I would almost demand that the town manager act appropriately based on the information that we had given from this. But are those feelings, the known feelings you're talking about, are they the feelings known because of the way this was done the first time? Or is, I guess the question I'm really trying to get to, is this the proper way? Is this the way that this should have been? I don't like to say should, because it's almost like a moral.
You as the government body of this town can direct how this process would unfold. There are two ways it would occur in most jurisdictions. I think to date, I think the system worked. There was a detection of an encroachment in the right-of-way, and the day it was evaded. Now a property owner has property and wishes to solicit a decision from you. The only way that decision can be rendered would be in the form of a development agreement that only you can approve. The question becomes how we get there. In some jurisdictions, the manager goes one-on-one with each of you and gets input and comes back with a recommendation. What I'm hearing now, I've only been here about six months, is that generally this comes to you in an open meeting, and that's what you're doing tonight. In other jurisdictions, it would have been one-on-one with counselors, and there would have been back and forth, and then the manager would make a recommendation with staff. What I'm hearing tonight is the manager's coming to all of you in the open, but at the end of the day, you're gonna have to approve a development agreement he can't. Just for one reference, I can't do anything to town property, only you folks can.
Okay, Vice Mayor Lamar, question? Mr. Moore, question?
No, I don't have any questions. I do have some observations. I think we're a bit off the mark on talking about how it got back, except for the legal question of whether we can legally consider this, that having been answered. And the question is, do we want to give away our public right-of-way to a business, period? And is that good for the town, good for the people of this town, period? That's the question, in my mind.
So the fundamental, you're right. Councilman Maguire, a question?
Yeah, and what I'm asking is, are we voting tonight to give you the freedom to move forward as you see fit, or are we voting to approve a specific agreement?
No, neither.
Too much.
Not as I see fit, and not approval of any agreement. You've just given me authority to, to be the town attorney, to work on a development agreement with those folks that you would see that if you, and you can change, and that you will come back to us. All right. So I'm just negotiating to you, I have no approval, and any recommendations you would make, we would incorporate to that agreement.
Councilman, that's their questions.
Question. If we give away the right-of-way to whatever name this outfit's going under, does it have an impact on the streetscape? I've been here for 27 years, and the first time I got involved in the town, people were asking for sidewalks, pedestrian-friendly sidewalks. And Ian is in the back of the room, and I think they made an effort to acquire right-of-way to accomplish that mission. And in some cases, we got it. In other cases, one of the parcels is abouting and adjoining this, refused to give us any additional right-of-way.
Are you asking me to?
No, no, I'm just stating the history of sidewalks and right-of-way in the town of Cape Creek. Now you're asking us to give some of it back.
No, if I may, there was a sidewalk existing in front.
I've seen it, been there, done it.
Correct. They're asking, they're asking for roughly 10 to 14 feet or 9 to 14 feet, that's from the north part of the sidewalk to the building. So it would not affect the streetscape because we have the sidewalk there already. It would affect vegetation, obviously, because you can't have plants with a patio woods. My only concern about abandonment, and council will work this out, is we would have an easement, either relocate that line or an easement for that access to that water line that goes under there.
Statute requires you, if you decide to abandon, it's subject to all existing easements.
And I need an answer to the issue of the underlying easement. Why did we get 15 feet from the previous owner?
I would have to ask the manager if he, if he wanted to or not, that night.
Here comes Ian.
Not along you.
Members of council, the project came through the town for site plan review. We had 80 feet of right-of-way consistently throughout the town core. Town engineer at the time determined that additional 15 feet would be of good use to the town. The applicant at that time installed a sidewalk east of the restaurant and just south of it as well. So the 15 feet was, in this case, dedicated to the town, not just an easement, as Bandy has seen fit to do, acquire for the town on the south side of Cape Creek, where it was in the schoolhouse. Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Hibbit?
Yeah, I'll just comment. Councilman, that mayor right there appointed me to the Streetscape Committee when we got started on that very idea. And I'm just trying to tell you, I don't think that what we're asking violates or defeats an idea. I don't think the town needed a complete 15 feet for the sidewalk and the streetscape that it needed. It got 15 feet, which crowded the building. And so I don't think that we violate the very essence of what the streetscape was intended to be by, with this what we're asking, okay? I just want that to be understood. Secondly, we are not asking for the entire length, because the 15 feet came off the entire property. We're only asking for the portion that's immediately adjacent to the building, where the right-of-way coming right up next to the building has such a dramatic impact on the building. Remember this, the best place to be in an Arizona winter is on the south side of the building, where the winter sun in the south hits you. You put a patio in the north, it's gonna freeze in the winter, it's still gonna get summer sun in the morning and afternoon. You put on the east and west, it's gonna get, it's gonna be baked. This is the best place we can do, and on a day like today, we can make people from Seattle feel at home. So it's just, it's just a very desirable piece of ground to the restaurant, and if some compromise can be worked out in hard feelings about what did happen, call a trial period, whatever you want. As a lawyer, I'm always choosing those defined terms and trying to use something. To me, it looked like a period where the idea got tried out. I don't mean to offend anybody, and I hope that whatever happened during that period can be overlooked. I can say that as a lawyer of 38 years, a human being of 65 years, and I can also say it as a parent. it as a parent. When my kid screwed up really big, if I thought my kid screwed up really big, I couldn't always get my kid to agree that he screwed up really big. But if the next time he came to me and did what I thought was right, I try to, to not to set aside my anger and frustration with what had happened before. I think what you're being told is we're coming to you the right way. We're only asking that you give your town manager direction to begin working with us and maybe give him some directions whether you prefer abandonment versus a lease-use agreement or something like that. We're just asking that you initiate the process and try to set hard feelings aside and let us start fresh with you.
No, they built a bar out there. Didn't ask. Simple question, go to the town and ask. Resolve the right of way issues. Does the portion you're asking us to abandon have value?
Of course it would. I, I see that you obviously assign some value to it because you're not willing to, you're not just going to snap your fingers and say, "Take it." So, you see some value. On our side, there's value to us for the very reasons we're speaking about it. And I think fair market values defines what a willing buyer, willing seller would come. So, I mean, I, I think realistically, we can see that it has some value.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anything else, Mr. Hittis, before we go to the public?
I'm not.
Oh, you have a question?
What we have here, and this is really for staff and perhaps Liam can find his way up there. We, what we have here is certainly 95 feet of right of way as it goes along with your property. At Bentley's, we're down 80 feet. At the town dump, we're down 80 feet. Should those, should construction occur on either of those properties, would we be asking there for the 15 feet in order to make it a continuous extended right of way?
Great. Councilman Lamar and the council, I think that, that I get, the only way that we could get the 15 feet was with new construction.
Right.
I've certainly asked the property owners to the west and to the east to dedicate easements for the sidewalk or pedestrian pathway and I have not been successful with that. If they do build a new building, of course, it would be an opportunity to try to do that, but it's, at this time, we don't have a mechanism that would require that.
Thank you. And I would point out that that easement, 95-foot easement, should recon, should construction occur on adjacent properties, that's something that would be valuable to the town, particularly given the amount of traffic in rez, rez that's taking place over there. I don't think that was a question.
Councilman Bunch question. Kind of wish Ian was still in here. Maybe you know, Bambi, is there any other place in town where it widens out like the, is there any, any other, any other place along the Cave Creek Road through the core where the, where the, where the right of way goes from 80 to 80 to 95 or some other number?
Councilman Bunch, members of council.
Hey, your battery's dead.
I believe there is along the south side of the road where the Kiwanis property is now. I think that was a little dedication of 55 feet.
Okay.
And also holds streetscape.
Anywhere it goes narrower than 80 feet?
I don't believe so. I believe our minimum's 80 feet throughout town.
Well, just because we got it written down, don't mean it's so. Okay, thank you. That, that was my question.
I believe you can.
Sure. Mr. Hittis, if there's nothing else, I'll go to the public.
Thank you.
Ms. Carrie? Is there anyone?
Yeah, there is.
I have members of council. If there is a development agreement developed specifically with regard to this case, I would issue you if it would be brought back before the council's republique here rather than being decided in an executive session.
It would have to come back to council if that's council's question. Does anyone else wish to speak on the public, on this matter?
I'm Katie Ginn, the Cave Creek yesterday's rodeo queen. My question on this is, is it going to affect the flow of Cave Creek? When it gets that narrow, I feel like it's going to affect and make it feel cramped and overwhelming. We're trying to build the town of Cave Creek and make it bigger and better. I just feel like that would hinder it a lot.
Does anyone else wish to speak on agenda item number three? Mr. Sorcek.
Mr. Sorcek, by a thousand years' warning, sorry, Cave Creek seems to be likely to do this before. A gentleman mentioned that these people went ahead without a permit onto Tom property. And now, now that the banks been robbed, they want to give them money back. If you take a look at the thing you passed, I talked to some of your council members and what happened was the town renewed an agreement to them to put their water barrel on Tom property. They didn't tell you that, though. It's 100% on Tom property. That's a liability. Getting the chance again, there's further liability. I can't imagine why you voted for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sorcek. Does anyone else wish to speak?
Can I ask a question?
Of course. Councilor Lepsky question.
Ian, long as you came back in. Is there, is there enough room at the business wanted to, in the parking lot east of, of this area to build out a, a similar patio?
Councilman Lipsky, members of council? Yes, there is. Thank you.
To activate the discussion, we need a motion. Councilman Bunch?
Move to direct the town manager to pack an agreement between the town of Cave Creek and the roadhouse, why the roadhouse used the town public right of way.
I'll second. The motion has been moved to second. Councilman Bunch?
I think all of the issues, the, the thing, everybody was really in bad shape when that thing showed up on the property and we were very critical of the folks who encroached our property and we, we stated that, you know, really they, they didn't do it the right way, they shouldn't do it, or they didn't do it the right way and, and we were annoyed and it cost a lot of money and a lot of time to, to fix their mistake. Did they do it without permission yet, I would fear so. Now, they're back asking permission, which is the way the process should work. With this council, were the, the manager, the town manager, to do this any other way, we would be critical once again. I think this is the right approach for doing this. I think we should give them a chance to come back and try and work out the agreement. I also think we should try and work, because I, I, first of all, I think it's ridiculous that there's 15 feet extra, extra width there in the right of way, right in the middle of town to begin with. But that's history, that happened a long time ago. I think that, that the, the manager should be able to approach that and then bring an agreement back and if we don't like it, we don't pass it. But at least they should have the chance of due process, doing the thing the right way as opposed to dark of the night as it was happening before.
Vice Mayor Lamar, you have a second?
Well, I, I guess I agree with, and I second this motion because I oppose this agenda item. And let me make some clarification in the way of supporting my second, opposing. First, the issue of course before was narrow and had they done an illegal act by building in our right of way without a permit? Well, one, had they approached on our right of way, yes, that was one criminal act. The other violation of ordinance was that they built a structure without permit. So, two, you know, that, that happens from time to time with respect to building a structure. It's not the first time in the town core, the restaurant or other businesses built a structure without a permit. But the more serious matter was the public right of way and encroaching on that without permission, without a permit and, and, but the issue for me wasn't so much that they didn't get a permit. I, I don't expect them to, frankly, given history. But it is not good public policy for us to take public right of way, which in essence belongs to the citizens of this community, and give it to a, a business who happens to be friends with some or all of us, so that they can make more money at their bar or because they can have an amenity for their business, for profit, where they're making kinds of money to start with. That, first, that, that doesn't even sound right for public officials to do that. And number two, I maintain that since we have that, that utility, it's not for no good reason. There was a determination, a specific determination, and it was for the good of the town when we got the easement. And Bambi has worked hard all over town for various reasons to get public property from private owners. And number two, there's a very functional reason, too. There is, in fact, this isn't, oh, it's utilities, but we don't have utilities. It's utilities, but we have water lines in there. Now, I had, I did, I have represented government entities when I was a lawyer for, I guess I'm still a lawyer, but when I was practicing law. And, and I know full well that one of the big problems we have, and every community has, and the state highway department has, and the county highway department has, is getting too young to lease and let you don't impair traffic, having room to work, having room to get your equipment in there. So, what, what, what the applicant is basically saying is, we want you to give us your, your citizens' property back to us so we can make money with it. Thank you very much. So that you can further encroach on traffic flow and cause dangerous, perhaps potentially dangerous situation when we have utility problems. And by the way, we want you to wait until we take apart our quote temporary trial structure before you get access to those, to those utilities. That doesn't seem like sane public policy for a town. And it doesn't seem appropriate. And for those reasons, not because they didn't get a permit, not because, and we've been misrepresented too many times in the past, but because it's just not good public policy. And we shouldn't be giving our public right of ways away, particularly when a resident puts a couple of cornerstones in driver's truck across the public right of way and he gets in the, sees in the system where the marshal comes out and he has to move the stuff from the right of way. If he just owns some property and he's, and he's just a nice guy, we're not, we're not giving rights away to those citizens. So, I don't think we should give it away to the roadhouse.
Vice Mayor? Uh, I was going, I, I can come back to you. I'd like to go to each and every one.
The misconception about giving away, that's what we're giving him permission to go see what he can get for it.
Okay, all right. Councilman Bunch?
Yeah, I, I believe, Steve, that what we're doing is, is we're, we're looking at giving the town manager the, the right to go negotiate, see what he can actually get for it, so it's not a non-performing asset sitting there not doing anything for us. And if we don't like what he, what he gets, come back with, move, move the four-inch line, it could be part of the agreement to where it's not a problem, set it at 12 feet instead of, instead of 14 or whatever number, you know, whatever number makes sense. There's, there's, there's design issues here that they'd be talking about and, and if we didn't like it when he got it done, then we didn't have to approve it.
But Ernie, our, our town staff and our town manager is busy. And when we pay them their salaries with taxpayers' money, well, they should be doing that for things that we're actually going to do, not things that we don't have, have supported for. So, I'm not, I'm not concerned about having them spend, I am concerned about them spending how many, two, three, four weeks again, working out and having our lawyer going around, around, around with, with draft agreements and spending more money. We just, we just spent a bulk of their money trying to enforce what they did without a permit and, and the, the criminal violation. But I do get the issue, Ernie, I'm just saying that, and I have a right to object. As part of my, my second and my speech is, that this is not sound public policy to give our right of way and I don't support it. So, but I do understand exactly what's happening here. So, I'm not confused.
Just kind of don't like the word give. Okay, let me go to the other members of council, if I may, please. Councilman Lipsky?
I have a question for the town manager, or for federal council, because I don't remember what the exact amount was, but I believe they, at some point in the process, had, had made an offer to lease as a particular dollar amount, didn't they?
Correct.
How much was that? $25. I, I was almost going to give him too much credit. Ernie, do you really want us to, to spend time negotiating with people who, A, would, would offer to pay us that amount of money to lease the very valuable property that they're asking us for and B, who, yeah, I'm all for people coming in here and doing things the right way after they do it the wrong way, intensely the wrong way. But when their lawyer comes in and calls what they did a trial period and writes a letter like this to us that essentially is, is more or less damning us for, for countless things and, you know, I, I don't think they should get credit at all, first of all, for coming in and doing it the right way. I don't think they did it the right way. They didn't come, you know, in any way apologizing for what they did. They called it a trial period, which is the most absurd thing I've heard, I think, since I've been on the council. It's just such a waste of time and energy, the, the, the staff's time and our time and the public's time. It's just, the whole thing just seems crazy to me.
Well, you directly asked me a question, but let me ask you one back. Have you ever walked to a swap meet and said, "I'll give you $100,000 for that 15-inch Chevy rim"? You don't, you, that's not, it's called negotiation.
Yeah, not, not when I'm, not, not when I'm claiming to be a, a good citizen of, of the community and a good business and a business that's concerned not just with itself, but for the, the community of large. No, that's not the way to approach it. The way to approach it isn't to insult you and see, see what you'll say back. No. At swap meets, sure, Ernie. This isn't a swap.
Let me go to other members of council, please. Councilman Lamar?
I'm not particularly concerned about what's happened here in the past. I think we need to look at where we are now. I also had real concerns about things that were written in the letter. For example, just a trial period. Oh, citing the liquor board as being thought of as being permission to construct on the town property. Those, those really are not, I don't like them, but those are not really germane to what we're talking about here. What we're talking about here is a policy of asking our town manager to negotiate a piece of property that we don't really understand very well and that for a purpose, as Councilman Lamar has stated, was granted to the town and that may in fact be continuous with other properties in the future. At some point, the town dump, at some point, Bentley's, is going to be reconstructing property there. And if we all of a sudden give it away, the right of way in front of the roadhouse, I think we've boxed ourselves in there. Thank you.
Councilman Esser?
I don't have a lot to say. I just, I applaud Peter's effort to create win-win. I don't think this is it. And he's, has stated that if we choose not to go along with this, we don't have to. And I know a lot about the art of negotiation and your client never did that. And I think the vice mayor makes an outstanding point. Someday, the little town of Cave Creek is going to have to have established policies that we follow. No free ride. It's not necessarily a saloon town. So, I can't support what we're doing. I like the effort, but as has been pointed out, we'll spend more time and money, Mr. Sims, and he's as good as you can get, negotiating some kind of contract. I'm not.
I think it's all been said and I probably said it in the very beginning.
I think it's all been said, and I probably said it in the very beginning, but, um, I mean, if really, if you look at these pictures, thank you for providing them, but boy, that really just comes right out, I, I just can't imagine riding down Cave Creek Road and seeing, you know, 150 people hanging out, wanting to get three months' worth of south location and a little sun on themselves. I, I, I'm appalled that this even came to us, I, I really, really am, and I fully understand Peter doing that, but, um, no, I, I couldn't support this, I can't support, and I don't know how you raise your kids, but I'm not sure I could have quite done what you did, because I think maintaining a sense of, um, what has been brought up here, um, if you do it for one, you're gonna have to do it for others, you can just go right on down the line, and we, to some degree, given that we're gonna have five feet right off the end there for bicycles, I, I just can't even imagine it, so anyway, I, I'm certainly not based like this at all.
Councilman Bunch, Vice Mayor Lamar, anything to close?
Nope. Okay, there are three points, uh, I'd like to make, um, first of all, this is exactly the body that should be hearing this. I personally would never want a town manager to tell a nap, like, and say, well, no, council, town, county, council doesn't know, this is the body that should be hearing this request. Uh, it's a shame the way things happen, I, I think the well got poisoned, uh, I, when I did see the results, I found them quite attractive, um, but it was done in, in the wrong way. I was prepared to support this tonight under the banner of forgive and forget, but I don't think that council should be in the business of forgiving and forgetting, because then you start to parse that out to friends, or something you like, or something that made you smile. But that which I am swayed by is the Vice Mayor's, uh, um, speech, and that is, should council be adopting this as policy just in general, nothing to do with the roadhouse or anything else, should it be going, start to go down the road of, uh, of giving up its, its property or its, its right of way? Even if they were willing to pay a thousand dollars a month, I don't think that is a legitimate reason to, uh, to, to do this.
The roll please, Carrie.
Councilman Bunch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clancy?
No.
Vice Mayor Lamar?
No.
Councilwoman McGuire?
No.
Councilman Lipsky?
No.
Councilman Esser?
No.
Mayor Francine?
Uh, you stand along with your stand-up, Councilman Bunch, no, with a vote of seven to one, the motion failed to pass. Agenda number four, council discussion and approval to expend funds not to exceed $86,180 for the purchase and installation of bleachers from Danco Specialties to be located at these rodeo grounds, along with a concert by Metallica. Who's presenting, Mr. Vaxley?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. The Metallica thing was a...
It caught your attention.
Yes, it did.
I could be a Metallica fan.
Oh, I can't, I can't imagine the vocal from a trunk of Metallica out there. Um, so as you're aware, uh, early last year, we had to dismantle the bleachers on the east side of the rodeo grounds due to, uh, the safety concerns for those. We're here before you tonight to, uh, ask for the funds to expenditure, for expenditure of a new set of bleachers to replace them. The new set of bleachers will be roughly 75 feet in length, they'll be 15 rows, elevated off the ground about 40 inches to maintain site pictures, and they'll be code compliant with seven, uh, handicap spaces and seating for additional 638 people. They'll have handicap grounds going up to it and two sets of stairs. With that, if you guys have any questions, be happy to answer them.
Questions from the council, any remarks?
I can't think of a phrase to, uh, turn my congratulations to Mike and supportive as a word into a question, so I'll pass.
You could say, would you be accepted as a congratulations?
And I don't want to do anything other than ask a question.
Does anyone in the public wish to speak on this?
Vice Mayor Stoll?
Oh, you, there's a question, council members.
I, I may be wrong on this, it was a little while ago when I wasn't on the council, but this did come before a council at one point, I think, not this exact thing, but the, um, and maybe it's different bleachers, but I think that, I'm guessing it's the same bleachers, and the, and the cost at that time, which wasn't all that long ago, was, I think, 75,000. And I'm just curious to know whether the delay is what caused the price increase, or is it a different company, or is it a different process, I'm just curious of that.
Actually, the, uh, since that time, that was an estimated cost at that point in time, but you look at the Danco Specialties, uh, proposal that was included in there, in your packet, that shows that the actual cost of the bleachers were 72,980, and then there'll be an additional 13,200 expended for the concrete underneath.
Okay, thanks. Our question, Councilman Bunch question?
And this is in the budget, correct?
Yes.
Any other questions? Anything else, Mr. Vaxley?
No.
Does anyone wish to speak, Tracy, do you wish to, I think council's ready to move on this. You're free to speak.
We don't really have much to add, I can say for the change in the quote, we had, when we had gotten a bid, we didn't have the estimate for that much concrete, and we appreciate Mike having foresight to plan to expand on that elbow for a future date, so it certainly is a difference in the, the quotes that he was seeing before to now, it's for planning future expansion, it's a smart thing to do. The only other thing that I think we can say is that the Cave Creek Road Rodeo Association continues to thank the town of Cave Creek and the hardworking staff for their commitment on these grounds improvements, and, and looking towards the future, so thank you.
Vice Mayor Lamar, Lamar, please.
That's great, Ernie, we can debate this one too. I move to approve the expenditure of funds, not that C-86,180, $86,180 for the purchase and installation of bleachers from Danco Specialties to be located at the rodeo grounds.
Motion made in second, Vice Mayor Lamar?
Yeah, my observation is this, having been here since 1986, um, and having heard, during the time of incorporation today, talk about, uh, staying a western town, staying rural, being true to tradition, and it seems to me that, uh, one of the best things we've done in order to do that, is what Mike's done, the town manager's done, and our staff has done, to make the rodeo grounds, uh, an attractive, uh, site, so that we can book it with more events, uh, so that we can support the Fiesta de Rodeo, this is the cornerstone of this small town that keeps us western, that keeps us, uh, uh, rural, uh, and it, there have been citizens for, forever, working to keep that alive, to keep that going through bad years and good years, and I, and I do believe that, that it would be a great, great asset for this town to have, and it's not just, it's, so that it's a profit center too, so that we can make that something that we can be proud of, that our citizens can be proud of, that we have great events, high school rodeos, uh, regional rodeos, roadings, those kind of things, um, and keep the old west alive, and also make it a profit center for the town, and so I applaud, I know you guys have worked very hard on this, and I applaud you for it, and I support it, and I do support this.
Councilman Bunch, you had the second?
Yeah, I made the second because I wanted to argue with Steve, unfortunate agreement everything, just, uh, this makes the rodeo arrangements more, uh, successful.
Anything else from council? Councilman Lipsky?
Yeah, I, I just want to make clear, I, I was at the, the meeting when this came up last time, and, and it was voted down, I think that the expenditure was, was, it was possible to do this, and it wasn't done, I'm thrilled that I'm on a council that's going to approve it, uh, I, I think it's great that these bleachers are going in, I think Mr. Vaxley is doing a magnificent job, I think you guys do a magnificent job, and I'd love to see, I'd love to participate in, uh, seeing more use from, from the rodeo grounds, and, and I only regret that I haven't had, you know, time to work with you, Mike, in, uh, in that, uh, direction, but I hope to in the future.
Look forward to it.
I'm afraid you're gonna get a lot of people agreeing on this one, doesn't always happen with us, does it, people? Uh, this is a part of a process of making our rodeo grounds more useful, more benefit to the town, both for town events and for outside events, and we need to see this within the context of an upgrading of the rodeo grounds that will be of great benefit, and hopefully a joint effort of the council, Mike and his group, and Tracy and her group. Thank you.
Councilwoman Clancy?
Dinos to everything that was said, so I don't think I have much to add, I totally agree with it as well.
Councilman Esser?
No more splinters, good job, guys.
The whole reason why council is in this position to approve an expenditure for bleachers to expand the rodeo grounds, because of all the hard work you've been doing, Tracy and your volunteer, we cannot thank you enough. The roll please, Carrie, this is financial.
Councilwoman Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lamar?
Yes.
Councilman McGuire?
Yes.
Councilman Lipsky?
Yes.
Councilman Esser?
Yes.
Councilman Bunch?
Yes.
Mayor Francine?
Yes, by unanimous votes, seven to zero, the motion through the passes, thank you, council. Let the record reflect that agenda item number five, the real visiting staff on the topic of question, the mayor.
Uh, moving on to general, item number five, uh, council discussion of the approval of the resolution of R. 2016-01, such right-of-way title and interest as the town possesses a non-motorized trail easement located at 5140 East River Road, APN number 21147-036. Do we have a presentation, Bambi?
Uh, yes, just a short presentation.
Okay.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you, to, to show you where we are at. The subject parcel is on New River Road, and this is the mayor's property, and in 2004, he had dedicated graciously this piece of trail easement. Here is the 52nd Street alignment trail that goes all the way up to, um, to the park, to the desert foothills, which also accesses the park to the west. So, the goal was to get these parcels to dedicate their trail leasements, and they have not been willing to do that. Therefore, the mayor's requested that this be abandoned, and it's not really a necessary trail for our trail system, or the enhancement of our trail system. Therefore, I don't feel that it's necessary, and I have no issues with that. So that's what is before you tonight.
Do we have any questions from council?
This has nothing to do with connectivity by doing this?
Councilman Esser, no.
Ernie, any questions?
I'm sorry.
Question?
No, I don't have any, I, I don't have a man.
Do we have any public comment?
No.
Will I bring it back for a motion? Do we have one?
I can do it, move, move to approve resolution R. 2016-01, a resolution of the mayor, hmm, in town council, the town of Cave Creek, Arizona, venue such right, title and interest as the town possesses a non-motorized trail easement located at 5140 East River Road, APN number 211-47-036.
Second. May I offer, maybe just for, just for posterity's sake?
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, you may, I offer a friendly amendment that, that leave the mayor out, that I sign it and, and be the, the Vice Mayor and Town Council?
Yeah, that works.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. I, I made the motion, and, and based on all the conversation we had about the irresponsibility of giving away the, the communities of, in, in, in interest in, in, in real property, I, I can't support this, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Vice Mayor, can I address that point? There is a statute directly on point here, uh, if indeed you have an easement that is no longer used, and if you, as the governing body, can determine that it's no longer necessary for use, you have a legal right to abandon it without compensation, with one, and to add, to require that the property owner maintain it, so you, you're welcome to, to, to stand up.
Well, then I'll change my mind. I just wanted to say hi to everybody else. And, and I seconded it, so I approve your amendment.
Thank you. Anything, any?
All right, I'm done.
Can we have a vote?
Vice Mayor Lamar?
Yes.
Councilman McGuire?
Yes.
Councilman Lipsky?
Yes.
Councilman Esser?
Yes.
Councilman Bunch?
Uh, yes.
Councilwoman Clancy?
Yes.
I'm waiting for the mayor to return. I'm waiting for the mayor to return. I know, I'm not a man that you have to pay.
Mayor's fair.
I did all I could, man. I tried to go to the chip ceiling, man.
They wanted curbs and lights, I got, I got real anxious, everybody.
Well, let us know if you want to put in a caveat.
Oh, my God.
Okay, we are on to, yes, this is going on record.
I don't care.
We are on to agenda item number six, thank you, council. Council discussing an authorization to pay an additional 1,288, a 21 cents for sales tax not included on a previously authorized invoice for an amount of 20,451 dollars to Custer Seating Corporation, who are prepared to the wastewater treatment plant. Council already authorized the 20,000 plus on July 20th, 2015. Town manager?
Uh, Mayor, council, uh, previous town engineer had a habit of forgetting to add the sales tax to his, uh, request, uh, this is the last one, I hope, behind of that situation. Um, the item has been purchased, it's been restored, it's working, but for whatever reason, they skipped out. Uh, you won't see these in the future because they're under the, the limit, this is the last one, that's, it's over the 10,000 dollar, the whole project limit, that's why I see it before you today.
Maybe you want to have Mr. Weddington check that there aren't any more out there?
He's looking.
So the council's aware. Okay, questions from council?
No.
Okay, anything else, uh, the public comment, you being a little bit, thank you, Councilman Bunch. Move to authorize payment to Custer Seating Corporation, the amount I took seat, 1,0288, 41 cents for sales tax, invoice number 59430.
Second.
Motion made in second, Councilman Bunch?
It'd be awful to have Al Haller catches for not paying sales tax.
Counselor, ask for your second?
Done deal.
Okay, uh, Carrie, this is financial, the roll please.
Councilman McGuire?
Yes.
Councilman Lipsky?
Yes.
Councilman Esser?
Yes.
Councilman Bunch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lamar?
Yes.
Mayor Francine?
Yes, by a vote of seven to zero, the motion clearly passes, on to agenda number seven, the last of the agenda items for the first council meeting of the round new year, council discussion approval of resolution R. 2016-03, adopting a schedule of fees, terms, and conditions for the use of town hydrant meters by the public town manager.
Uh, Mayor, council, we actually have a program where we actually have some hydrant meters, I believe it's six of them, um, that we actually lend out to, it's supposed to be to businesses while they're doing construction projects or short-term projects, uh, it's come to my attention that two of these meters are all permanent, you never see them back. We pay anywhere from 600 to 1,200 dollars for these meters, one gentleman uses the meters for, uh, basically November, December, but he keeps it all on a year, the other gentleman uses... The other gentleman uses it more often, and he uses it for a lot of different projects, not always in Cave Creek. We have a long list of folks who would like to use these meters as they do their projects, that's what it's designed for. So my request tonight is, first, to amend, I actually have one new fee down there, the meter relocation under section four of the application. I would strike that right now. I had a discussion with town council, legal council, that if it's a new fee, I have to have it published, or the town has to have it published for sixty days, which we've done, so I'd strike this at that time. All the other fees are the same. There's also a survey in your package showing the difference in our fees compared to others, so come on, so I'm going to bring this back to you to make those adjustments in the fees, they're not part of the rate calculation or anything like that. So what I'm really hoping for is that you folks approve the application and the terms and conditions, and it'll give us more control over our own meters that we use. It limits them to three months. I'll also mention, it's all the standard terms and conditions that all the other municipalities use in the North Valley area. A little different from Phoenix, because they tend to have a lot, but just trying to get a handle on this and make it more fair and more user-friendly to your folks.
I'm a little confused. Is it used for construction trucks to fill up or potable water, because they're doing something, they want to heat the dust down, is that what it is?
Yeah, generally, they don't want to use that standpipe. They like it because the hydrant's closer to their place of operation, to their project. The program is redesigned to only be the three, six months while construction projects go on. For whatever reason happens, people keep these a lot longer than other folks can get them, and we really weren't planning on buying more meters, because they're generally more than a thousand dollars each, and with only getting back fifty dollars a month on them and a normal usage fees, it takes a long time to give them back, pay back, you're generally investment, so it's just, we're throwing that. Yes, the short answer is yes.
Actual questions from council? Anything else, town manager? Just public comments? Harry, you can say that on a motion, please. Mr. Ernie?
Move to approve resolution R two thousand sixteen dash zero three, a resolution from the mayor and town council of the town of Cave Creek, Arizona, adopting a schedule of fees, terms, and conditions for use of town hydrant meters by the public.
Motion made in second, Councilman Bunch?
With the, with the suggested changes by the town manager?
Meter, meter relocation changes.
Meter relocation.
Anything else from council? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. The ayes are clear. Under council request, council is going to be getting a email from Ms. Carrie about her treatise for the target date, the twenty fifth, just to start off on for the council to say, "Yes, I can..." Motion to adjourn, council?
No move.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.